It's 7:32 on September 14th. It's the Warren Township High School District 121 School Board Meeting. First part of opening session is the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could all stand up and say the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
One big one.
It's true. Hold on, I think I have a note on that. Under new business number D, there will be no IGA with North Chicago. It's been taken out of the agenda.
All right.
Any other changes? If not, I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Anderson. Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Beals?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
I have five yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. There's no visitors or, excuse me, no recognitions tonight, so we'll go right past that section. Next up is reception of visitors. I did not see anybody that was signed in, but that does not prevent anybody from addressing the board if they would like to. Again, it's three minutes to address the board. It's not a dialogue, but we'd be very interested in what anybody has to say. That being said, would anybody like to address the board? On then. President's report. Only had one topic I wanted to talk about, and not one really to react to social media or anything like that, but the topic of our food service came up a couple of times.
At least a couple of times.
Well, so I actually came to lunch last week. Didn't tell anybody I was coming. Well, I told Dr. Algrim and Dr. Engel. Went to the cafeteria unannounced, not like they would recognize me anyways, just to look at the food service, see what it looked like. I had seen the pictures on Instagram what it looked like, and you know what? I thought the food was absolutely fine. You know what? It's industrial food service quality food. It was okay. It was good. Intentionally ordered a chicken sandwich because that seemed, chicken sandwiches and hamburgers seem to get a lot of, you know, photo opportunities online. It didn't look like most of the photographs. I mean, anything I saw up there, the burger, the chicken filled up the whole bun. Yeah, I opened it up, and there's not, you know, two off beef patties with special sauce, cheese, lettuce, pickles, tomatoes on a sesame seed bun type thing, but there's plenty of condiments on the side to add to it. It was fine. I ordered the fries because I love fries. You know what? They were baked fries, so they're not greasy and salty like McDonald's. They're healthier. I mean, everything's absolutely fine. Had a nice salad bar. I forget what the special meal of the day was. It looked very nice. So from my perspective, I had no issues with the food whatsoever. So just wanted to throw that out there. It was a free lunch, Dr. Algrim. I couldn't say no.
But they're all free anyway, so.
Well, and that's the other thing to consider. I mean, it's quality food. It meets all the health standards, and it's free for all students this year. And what do we say? An average is about a $900, $950 savings per student. So.
For the students themselves.
For the students themselves.
For what they buy.
Right.
Correct. And they can always bring their lunch, too, by the way.
You can always bring your own lunch. Absolutely. There's nothing to prevent you from doing that. So I think one of the biggest takeaways I got out of that after, you know, trying the food, it was so darn good to see all these kids in school, walking around, talking, laughing, giggling. And, you know, I left there thinking, well, the food was good, but even better was like, it was just great to see all the kids there. It's the first time I'd been in the building. And I think at this time last year, we were trying to figure out how to get kids into the building, and now one of our biggest concerns is the food that we're actually serving them at no cost. So I took that as a giant leap from where we were at last year.
Again, thanks, Mr. Schultz, for coming in. And in Quest, we do have a, you know, long-term relationship with Quest, and it's good for us. It was good for us, and I know that Rob mentioned that they're going to start to do some things with some students over here just to make sure that students continue to be able to give feedback. Since then, we have put some more information on the website, just some Q and As about things like why the fries taste different and why they are made with different ingredients, some of the products. So there are some things that we were able to hopefully communicate a little better to students, but certainly Quest is, you know, their intent on, as always, on trying to deliver as high-quality food regardless of what year we're in to our kids. So they're a great partner in that way, and they, you know, even after they started getting some feedback, they were serious about listening to it and trying to think through some lenses from a student perspective. So and again, they're also getting used to what it's like they have to, what it's like in this new year of, this new food service for us, how many meals they're going to have to make over the course of a day generally, and all those kinds of things they're figuring out a little better, too. So but I do appreciate Mr. Schultz coming through. I thought the food was, is good, and it looks good, and, you know, it does taste a little different if they're used to some things that had some unhealthier ingredients, but, you know, that's all.
Be like salt.
Like salt.
But I think that's just it, is that it's different, and that it's different than what they're used to. Because I asked my son, who's a chef, by the way. He chefs it up at home, and I'm like, how is it? And at first, he was like, it's different. And now he's like, just fine. He's got a half a day, but he stays and eats lunch. So, okay. It's gotta be okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I was thinking the same thing. It's the difference. And we had so many options and so many, they had pizza, they even had sushi sometimes for crying out loud. And now you're getting just basic food. It's, I would probably complain a little bit, too. But.
Well, we've tried to answer some of the questions on the website, and they'll continue to work with us. They've been great partners and continue to try to do everything they can for our students,
That's up. Next up is committee reports.
Dr. Engel has our insurance committee.
Good evening, everybody. On August 20th, we met with our lovely insurance committee meeting. We talked about the FY22 insurance plans and the updates, including the Wisconsin plan, possibly. We did discussion recommendations for the Education Benefits Cooperative for the tier rebates and how we're going to use that money for the wellness program for this year. We've also made recommendations of wellness participation requirements for FY22, exactly how many different items a person would have to do to meet the wellness incentive and requirements for that one. We talked about a couple other things in there, and then we adjourned. Any questions? Thank you.
Onto the superintendent's report.
A couple things. So we are a month into the school year, so that's kind of exciting that I think we're starting our fifth week of classes this week, and things are moving along. It's great to have students back in school, and I think that for sure, some of those students, it's nice to see some of the programs that the board got, our intervention programs working. We had a few students that we were just looking up to see how they were doing, and it looked like, you know, obviously some students that were needing to be more successful since they were remote, since they've come back have been. And so it's nice to see that students, I think, have embraced the opportunity to come back to in-person learning. We also, Mike didn't mention, but tomorrow, we actually have the first of three of our Wellness Mornings where students, where our staff either can get their blood screens and flu shots as part of our wellness program. So our All-Mon campus event is tomorrow morning. Oak Plain is next Wednesday, and then we do our Transportation Center on that Friday, the 24th. So that's just to let the board know that that continues to move forward. And we have a homecoming parade on October, on the morning of October the 2nd. And so we were hopeful, it was nice to see a board have representation in the Gurnee Days Parade. And it's just kind of, if you think you would like to participate in our homecoming parade on the morning of the 2nd, please just look for an invite from us, and we'll start to organize and make sure that the homecoming Student Council Committee knows that the board plans on participating. Also try to make sure we have some little, very cheap but meaningful giveaways from the board and all those kinds of little things.
They loved those.
Ran out.
Red spent.
Ran out weight advance.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
So we will make sure that there are more for the next parade. And it is nice, hopefully, the board and as many board members as possible can participate on that morning. We still, I know, we've put in a weekly letter a couple of times, and I think most people have committed to the intergovernmental picnic on Thursday, October 7th, so please keep that on your calendar. Also, just today, we got, some of you might have gotten it through your email as well, the Lake Division Illinois Association of School Boards Program Dinner and Program is scheduled for October the 13th. So we'll, I'll send that out in my weekly letter just in, as a reminder of the date and timing program. If you're interested after this weekend, just let Gene know as soon as possible, and we'll make sure we register you for that event. And that's all I had on kind of informal things, and I think we do have a couple of very important department reports this evening. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Geo Karas.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
So, so first thing I'd like to share some updates about from our Educational Technology Department over the last, basically covered in the last couple of years. I thought it'd be appropriate to kind of start with where we, what we did over the course of remote learning and hybrid learning during 2021. Our department pivoted quickly, especially at the start of the pandemic, to develop a student help desk program utilizing Google Forms to provide technology support for remote students. Basically, we're running things back and forth utilizing security desks, our routes out in the community to get kids to take in Chromebooks, return Chromebooks, and provide tech support for students, all done through Google Forms and follow-up communications. Virtual desktop software, we launched a porto, which is a virtual desktop software last year to provide a full Autodesk and Adobe experience, Adobe Photoshop experience for our art and industrial technology students. And our, I would love to say I found a porto, but it was actually our technicians, our network administrator, and the researches we were doing some of that, they found it. It was a great program for us, and actually several other districts heard about it from us and began to utilize the same program. So we were able to help other school districts in that process find ways to help serve their students. Google Workspace, we were able to update Google Workspace from the, last year, Google chose to monetize Google Apps for Education in the middle of the pandemic, so they got us all hooked in, and they decided that was the time.
Just shocking.
Right? We knew it was coming, we just were hoping it wasn't going to come last fall. But they tied, in that monetary update, they tied in a lot of the features that we needed to have for remote learning and hybrid instruction. So we needed to update to the full Google Workspace, and that actually served us well as SOPA became a reality over the rest of the school year, so that kind of made sure that we were in compliance with that. So it was actually really good for us organizationally. We utilized a digital equity federal grant. There was a digital equity fund that was released to districts. Not all districts qualified. We did, and it gave us a significant amount of funds to do things like a porto for virtual desktops and provide other software to support our teachers in the hybrid remote learning setups. So that was very useful for us over the course of last year. And then thermal scanners were actually implemented at both campuses for contactless temperature screenings, which helped us process students in and out of the buildings rapidly and make sure we had accurate temperatures so we were, you know, maintained building safety over the course of last year. It was a much more efficient model and much more cost-effective than having additional nurse staffing both sides of town. So, so data and network privacy update, some things that we've been doing. We renewed our partnership last spring with McQueen Technology Group for another three years. They've been a critical partner for us over the last, I believe, five or six years. I know three years, three years with me, and then a couple of years preceding that. They're a valuable partner for us. They provide great expertise, and they supplement our team to help us with major projects. We installed the Soteria system from MTG's new product that they launched to help us with network risk assessment and penetration testing so we can make sure that our networks are safe. It actually runs in real time, so we're getting constant updates. We make changes on our network, and we can see the immediate impacts. Do we make ourselves safer or less safe? That's been a great addition for us. It also is, they're going to be releasing a phishing package, phishing test package with education modules in it soon, and we're going to be implementing that during the school year because, again, as cybersecurity, as cyber attacks become a reality in schools, we need to make sure we're updating our network privacy and also educating staff and making sure that our staff are making correct choices, especially in the realms of email, because that's how a lot of malware and ransomware can get into the district. We are launching multi-factor authentication for all staff tomorrow. So teachers, we've been communicating with teachers and having them put in either select text messaging or the Microsoft Authenticator app. So the first time they log into devices are on their phones, they will get a message saying, you know, put in your, we texted your code. So just like logging into your bank for the first time on your computer or your phone, you get a code, you put it in. Now the, our network, our active directory recognizes your device and will allow you to continue to use your accounts. With our new network that we, new wireless network that we implemented this summer, we actually now have a secure guest network that is configured, active, and allowing people to use it. So we have a password-protected network during the school day, and at night, it opens up to be wide open, so, because we have a lot of people from, you know, press or other, you know, community members that are here utilizing the network at night. It's segmented, it's configured, so it protects the network integrity, but it still allows people to utilize it in a guest capacity. And then SOPA, the Student Online Privacy Protection Act. We've successfully met that, met that criteria. It was a lot of work with our teachers and staff to collect information about what was being used, a lot of conversations with our lawyers, and then more conversations with our lawyers, and more conversations with our lawyers. But we got through it, and we reviewed and approved 232 applications from March 1st through July 1st. And there was only, I think, seven that we denied, three of them because they weren't for kids, and three of them because the company refused to sign an agreement. The next one is our network infrastructure. We've been doing a lot of work in our network infrastructure over the past couple of years. We've brought in, I think my first year, we brought in a Nutanix data center to update, to a, what's called a hyper-converged infrastructure, so where you don't have like servers and then data storage, it's all in one. We finally got everything over to that, which then eliminates expensive licensing for something called VMware, which is the old data center model. So we no longer run VMware, which saves us $20,000 to $25,000 a year in licensing. It also eliminated the need for all those stored, old storage devices and servers. So we were, we used to have about eight servers, eight or nine servers total for the district. We now have two. So it's a big, big cost savings for us there. We streamlined our network connections, so we updated switches, we removed unused patch cables, we reduced VLANs. VLANs are segments of the network, so we had a ton of them, like hundreds of them, because when we implemented our old wireless system, we had trouble with people moving from one end of the district to the other. So we had to create all these network segments. That's no longer needed, so we've been reducing those down. And we replaced our old wireless system. So we moved away from Aruba, and we now are running Meraki throughout the district. It's cloud-based, which means that's two other devices, one in each campus. We no longer have local controllers. Everything's up in the cloud. So it's not, we are not reliant on our power or if we're less exposed for, you know, power surges or floods or any of that, thing of that nature, and we're guaranteed, you know, 99.9% uptime. And it also realized a reduced five-year cost of ownership for the Meraki versus Aruba. So we were able to save a little bit of money through, by replacing older equipment with brand-new. So I thought it might be, you guys might enjoy to see a picture, the before and after, some of our work that we've done in the head end. So on the left there is what our almond head end used to look like, and it's what it looks like now on the right. So you can see, we've done a lot of work chasing cables, figuring out where our connections were live, what was dead, what needed to be run, what didn't need to be run. Benjamin, our new network administrator, and Brandon sitting over here, did a lot of work over the last two years, just chasing, in off-hours, just chasing down connections. And because of their work, we were able to reduce the number of switches, reduce the number of ports that were needed, and have an efficient network throughout. We, in the almond head end, we installed a new cooling system installed. We installed smart battery backups, and we removed and recycled all the old equipment. And what's important to note about the new cooling system and the smart battery stuff is they're network-connected, they're internet-connected. So if we have a cooling system outage, it's not where we walk in on a Monday morning, it's 110 degrees in the almond head end and nothing in the district works. We get a notification as soon as that unit fails, and then we get another notification that the battery backup's just turned on, and we know exactly how strong they are and what our connections are like, and it gives us time to work with Jose to make sure we get ourselves back up online, get things fixed before we get run into a situation where we have, where we experience outages or equipment failure. So E-rate updates. Last year, on our E-rate cycle, we did the Meraki Wireless Project, and we started to replace switches in the district. We're about to begin our next E-rate cycle. We are in the second year of a five-year cycle. We are going to be looking at possibility, our firewall's up for renewal, so we'll be looking at the possibility for utilizing E-rate funds for that. We're at the end of our Comcast contracts. We'll be looking at their current rates and see if it's better to just extend our current contract or renew, hopefully at a lower rate. And then we'll be continuing our switching projects to make sure that we get the proper switching throughout the district. And then the benefits of E-rate is really when you're working with E-rate, not only do you get competitive bidding on the projects, but then you also pay 60, our district pays 60 cents on the dollar for anything we purchase through E-rate funds. So we do have one immediate need in the district right now is our Oak Plain head-end cooling unit. I talked about the almond head end. The Oak Plain unit needs to have the same update done. It fails, the current one fails regularly. It is not connected to the network, so we do not know when it goes down. We've had two failures in it in the past three weeks. The first one was in one of the weekends where the heat index was over 105, 110. The only reason it didn't shut us down is because our network administrator was in on a Sunday afternoon doing some network updates that had to be done during off-hours. Otherwise, we probably would have had some severe outages and probably would have lost some equipment. So it's very significant. It impacts the entire district. We do have, it also not only impacts some of the operations of the district, but also our backups and failovers tie the two together. So if Oak Plain goes down, we don't have anywhere to store things that happened at almond, or all the things that happened at almond. We do send some things up to the cloud, but there is a significant failover and backup relationship between those two, so it's important that we protect both head ends. We engaged with Train to kind of get an idea what that cost, what that cost that repair would be. It would be about $90,000. It's a turnkey solution. It would provide us reliable and network-connected equipment, and it would be a significantly lower cost than replacing the existing equipment in that Oak Plain head-end room. So it's just an immediate need, it's a pressing need in the district right now.
Yeah, we'll keep, this will be something the board might see over the next couple of weeks. Obviously, that's one of the downsides of not having a lot of funds around as things still continue to happen at our reality for us. So we do want to make sure that, if the board sees us in a couple of weeks, the importance of this specific item.
Okay. Any questions about the Education Technology Department? Just want to say, say again, it's a great team. It's, I think, it's, this is our third year, third, start of our third year now with our team intact and just continuing to do excellent work. Really proud of how hard this group of people works every day. All right. So the next thing, we're going to shift gears a little bit then to our return-to-school update and our SR3 grant plan. So one of the parts we're about to, we're going to share some information about the Elementary Secondary School Education Relief Grant or the American Rescue Plan. This is the third of three federal grants related to the coronavirus, and the rules for SR3 requires us to share some information about our return-to-school plan as well as part of our initial presentation to the board about our grant funding plan. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Keely to talk about the return-to-school update.
This is nothing new. This is stuff that you have seen consistently. It's mandatory that we have a part of our plan, and then we discuss it not only with you, but also our union leadership and our teachers. Obviously, we're maintaining our health and safety of our students and staff members by adhering to the CDC guidelines, universal incorrect mask wearing. We have our physical distancing in place. We're shooting, we're going for three feet during the school day, promoting handwashing and respiratory etiquette. We have signs all over the building. I think kids know the drill with this. Enhanced cleaning and maintaining a healthy facilities. It then also includes our ventilation, which we just happened to have before the, just before the pandemic, which really kind of worked out for us, particularly at the Oak Plain campus. Contact tracing in combination with isolation and quarantine and collaborations with state and local health department. We are contact tracing daily, the nurses' office, myself, the attendants' office, and we have an excellent partnership with the Lake County Health Department. We meet with them weekly, and they're great partners to have in this. We're providing direction for diagnostic testing. We do have some rapid testing on sites for certain situations, and then we help families secure that diagnostic testing outside of the school. We put in efforts in place to provide vaccination to school communities. We had a drive this summer at the Oak Plain campus where we offered vaccination for, we targeted our students. We've also obviously promoted any of the Lake County Health Department sites as well. We provide appropriate accommodations for children with disabilities in respect to their health and safety policies. This is with our special ed population, particularly those students with serious health conditions, providing them resources to make sure that there is no disruption in their education. There you go. Continuity services, academic needs. Again, this is what Warren Township High School is doing in the event a student is required to quarantine because they're positive or they're identified as a close contact. We're providing the family with instructional services, whether that be through going on Canvas, talking to teachers during their free periods, providing them for their academic needs, and also allowing them to participate and get full credit for the work that they're doing while they're on quarantine. Social, emotional, mental health. We have allocated a significant amount of our grant dollars to increase our social work and intervention staff to address these concerns for our students. We'll see, knocking on wood, I think the program we have in place is going to show excellent results. Too early to tell. Obviously, we're going to monitor that, but I'm very confident in things we're doing for that. And again, serving students with disabilities in respect to their health and safety. Again, our special ed director and the assistant director are working very closely with special ed students. And then finally, like we talked about earlier, the food service, we extended that SSO option where we are providing free meals to all students for the remainder of this school year. Back to you, Geo.
Thank you. Okay. So Dr. Keely shared the exciting stuff. Now I get to talk about grants for a little bit. All right. So the American Rescue Plan, just giving a little bit of history of what this is. This is the third grant that's in direct, released by the federal government in direct response to the coronavirus. The first one was the CARES Act. It came out in the spring of 2020, which gave the district about $225,000. Last spring, we presented to the board about SR2, which is about one point, I think about $1.5 million, and that's what we used to get our AIM program started and really increase our intervention response this year. So SR3 is in kind of in that same vein as SR2. It's really meant to provide districts with additional funds to address the impact of the coronavirus pandemic on student learning and school operations. But there's, because this grant is significantly larger than any of the other grants, there's some additional things tied to it. So we do, we were required to seek input from stakeholders, which we've been doing as part of our process the entire way, but this formalized that for all districts. We are required to utilize 20% of the funding to address student learning loss through evidence-based interventions. We allow, we need to allow public comment on the district-wide return-to-school plan. We need to present a formal grant plan to the Board of Education and then allow public comment for feedback. And then we need to post the final grant plan on the district website along with our return-to-school plan. So our SR3 grant plan, we are going to expend funding in three distinct areas. Addressing learning loss, summer enrichment opportunities, and after-school programs. We are going to be expending these funds from beginning in June of 2022 through July of 2024. The SR3 grant actually extends from now through August 31st of 2024. The district has already allocated the bulk of SR2 funds for this year. So we wanted to make sure that we had a good program in place, and we wanted to utilize the SR3 funds the following two years to continue to support the programming that we've put into action this year. Addressing learning loss, obviously I mentioned that in my last slide. That's part of the set aside. Summer enrichment opportunities and after-school programs are additional set-aside requirements from the state of Illinois that we have to include in the grant. No matter how we write it, there are still require, we are still required to allocate funds into those two areas. Those three areas together, though, aligned with the goals of our district and what we felt was necessary and appropriate to support our students. So we just are going to put all of the funds into those three areas. We're going to be using it during the 22 to 23 and 23 to 24 school years, and we are going to be utilizing these funds in the 2022, 2023, and 2024 summer school sessions. So addressing learning loss. So, addressing learning loss. Our plan for addressing learning loss is we are going to expend that allocation during these '22, '23, and '23, '24 school years. We are going to continue our AIM program. This is, and again, this is our initial grant plan. As Dr. Keeley said, we've just started our program. We're very excited about it. We can amend our plan as we go. If the AIM program, if we feel we need to change the structure of it or the staffing allocations of it, but we have to write a grant plan now, so we're going to continue our program. Eight interventionist teachers, four social workers, and supplies each year for two years. A restorative justice center at each campus with one supervisor at each campus to remediate behavior in lieu of student suspensions. We'll have an SEL and academic focus, and it will facilitate student-teacher restorative practices. This will be a critical function for us as a district to make, help make sure we keep kids in class and learning and making good choices throughout the school. And then supplies for that program. Panorama, SEL and Student Management Intervention Software. This is a software that's utilized in many districts in the area. It's extremely valuable. It helps us identify students with SEL deficiencies and then provides a platform for student services to work with those students to remediate those deficiencies. It's incredibly valuable. A lot of districts have had a lot of success with it. It is not something that our district has been able to afford, so we felt that utilizing grant, these grant funds to start working on that would be very beneficial. So, our total learning loss allocation over two years is $2.195 million, about $1 million, a little bit over $1 million, almost $1.1 million per year. Our SR3 summer enrichment program, we'd be expending this over the next three summer school sessions, beginning with this upcoming summer. This would apply to courses offered by the district for academic advancement, as well as for retaining, or remediating credits.
Can't see it.
Oh, I forgot that it's on two separate computers.
Goodness.
I've been doing okay, too. So, it's, over the next three summer school sessions, it's about utilizing our summer school program. So, this is for courses that we offer here for academic advancement and remediating credit. Summer school will have no costs for our families for the summers of '22, '23, and '24. Under the grant rules, we're not, we don't pay for student tuition. We pay for teacher salaries. So, we'll be funding summer school teachers' salaries, an additional summer school nurse to make sure that we have enough, meet the health and safety requirements, summer school dean to help work with SEL and make sure that our students are supported, as well as transportation costs for all students coming to summer school. That total allocation is $489,147, or about $163,000 per year for, to run summer school free of charge for our families. After-school programs, expending that allocation, but again, would be during next school, the next two school years, so FY '23 and FY '24. We would be running an after-school credit recovery room two times per week for one hour at each campus, and that would run immediately after school. So, twice a week, it would give students a place to come to. They're enrolled in maybe some ed annuity courses. They could remediate credits, maybe get a little bit of extra help, help give, provide another opportunity for kids to access that credit recovery, because not every kid, even if it is free, can participate in summer school. So, we want to make sure we continue to provide multiple opportunities for students to remediate credits. They can graduate with their peers. The Huntington SAT Prep Program, we currently run that through Title I funding. The Title I, though, only supplements half the tuition for our families. This is for a student, a program we offer to students who are approaching the college career benchmarks for the SAT. So, we hopefully, our hope is through that extra SAT preparation, we can get them up to meeting that standard. Usually, any year, we run between 50 to 100 kids in that program. This, we would use SR3 funds to supplement the other half of that tuition and provide that program free of charge for our students in the '22, '23, and '23, '24 school years. The total allocation for after-school is $61,678, or about $30,000 per year. So, all told, the SR3 grant allotment for the district is about, a little bit north of $2.7 million. That's $2.4 million of local allocation and about another $300,000 in states, state-required set-asides for learning loss, after-school programming, and summer school enrichment. So, that is our grant plan for SR3. So, again, focusing on three specific areas. Addressing learning loss is the vast majority of that allocation, summer enrichment programs, and after-school programming.
Can you give me those numbers again?
So, our numbers are, just the bulk numbers, in total is about two points, a little bit over $2.7 million, $2.4 in local allocation, and about $300,000 from state-required set-asides.
So, I'd just like to say, well, I think it's a great plan, by the way. I have no problem with the plan at all. But I think the thing that's really important, we also get out to the, to our, you know, stakeholders and friends of the district and whatnot, that we're not spending money that we have. We're spending money that we're getting from the government. So, this is one-time money that's going to disappear. Once we get out in the end of 2024, all this money goes away. So, it's not, it's not like we're just adding programs and we've been hiding money and we don't need a referendum, or whatever the case may be. This is additional money to help recovery for learning loss during the pandemic and COVID-19. And I think we need to make that clear every day.
And we talked about in our summer school literature that when we send that out, to be very clear that summer school is being funded by the SR3 American Rescue Plan over the next three years. Because that is, you're right, John, that is very confusing.
It is.
Any other questions, comments?
Chat.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Next up is the consent agenda. We don't have any changes to it.
One thing we do have is, in item D, one of the reasons that we wanted to make sure we had this on the agenda was there is a public comment specifically, if anybody wants to make public comment in regard to what Chris's presentation was and Dr. Keeley's about SR3, just something they wanted to make sure that was part of our agenda so that we can have that as part of our plan. So...
Assuming nobody wants to make a public comment on that? Ford?
Does anybody want to make a comment? Any one of you two guys want to make a comment?
Okay. Let's move forward with the consent agenda. There's no changes to it, so I'm going to go ahead and go forward with the motion. I move to approve the consent agenda, items as presented, which includes Exhibit A Personnel Recommendations, numbers 38 through 42 as posted, and Exhibit B Athletic and Activities Recommendations, numbers 8B through 11B as posted. The payment of the bills for September 14th, 2021, in the amount of $1,67,250.81. Regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of August 17th, 2021, and a second reading and approval of the district board policies as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Anderson. Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Beals?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Six yes. Motion carries.
Brings us on to new business.
Good evening, everybody. In front of you is the notification to post the required salaries for FY '21. Attached, you'll see the EIS Administrator and Teacher Salary and Benefits Report, and this is something that needs to be done annually. And if you guys have any questions, please ask.
Do you have any questions?
Pretty standard. Thank you.
Item two is our approval of a revised, I'm requesting the board approve a revised FY '22 staffing plan. The only change from our staffing plan that we've been utilizing is there is an addition of one conditional bus aid due to a specific need of a student. So, that's the only change in the staffing plan.
Questions? If not, I move to approve the fiscal year '22 tentative staffing plan as presented.
Second.
Second by Beals. Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Beals. Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beals?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Six yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is a resolution to close the Community Trust Credit Union account.
Good evening. We're looking for a board consent to close the account due to inactivity. There's approximately $25,000 there. The last time it was used was October of 2013. So, we would like to take the money from there and transfer it over to our activity fund, which would be the board scholarship funds to help fund future scholarships for the next couple of years, if you will. There's approximately $25,000 there, and this would be a good use of the funds.
Questions? And that I move to approve the resolution to close the Community Trust Credit Union Activity Account and designate the remaining balance to be applied to the board scholarship account currently held at First Midwest Bank.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Anderson. Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beals?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Six yes. Motion carries.
Next up is the approval of student fees.
I want to make sure we've actually had many conversations, or at least several conversations with the board about the impact of the referendum on student fees beginning potentially in the '22, '23 school year. Normally, we would do an approval as such for our student fees in March or April as the school year is approaching, but we did want to make sure because we have started communicating the two different fees, one with referendum and one without, we wanted to make sure that we got that approved by the board early. So, as we communicate things out to families, it's had board approval accordingly.
Questions? And that I move to approve the 2022, 2023 student fees as presented. With a successful referendum in June '22, the registration fees will be $200, parking fee will be $200, athletic fee will be $200, and the club fee will be $50. Without a successful referendum in June '22, the registration fee will be $600, parking fee will be $340, the athletic fees will be $260, and the club fees will be $50.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Anderson. Mr. Demonte?
No.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beals?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
I have five yes and one no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Just on to old business for the referendum update.
Just a few things for the board. We wanted to make sure that we caught you up on some of the things we've been trying to do to help inform the community regarding the referendum. And so, thanks to a few board members who were able to come out to our open houses, both before and after our open house, as we had a little session of information that we've tried to provide with people in regards to the cost to the taxpayer for the 60 cent increase, as well as the benefits for our students, as well as the ramifications if the referendum is not successful. So, we've tried to frame that down to about a 20-minute presentation that we gave at both of the open houses. We actually did informal ones, if you will, with a group of band parents, as well as with a group of drama parents. So, we were kind of just getting in the swing of trying to inform as many people as we can, now that we have the opportunity to do so in person. We also have created a video, which we'll post within the next couple of days, of the same information that we gave at open house. It's still the same 20-minute slides of information, if you will, if people want to view that on their own. Also, next week, we have Fill the Drum, which is an annual event that we're going to try to at least provide some general information to, for those families that attend shortly, because in any of these events, we want to make sure that we just take whatever opportunity we can to let people know about the referendum and let them know if they really want more information, to go to our district website. And then we're also trying to create some informational brochures at informal or formal events that we're recreating now that we kind of have the final package of all of that together. And we'll also be talking about, it takes us a few months in advance, but we had some community-wide mailings last year prior to the April referendum vote. We, I think we had five mailings in total. We probably won't look to do that many, but certainly, you know, as we get to the spring, we want to make sure we're sending out some community-wide mailings to everyone, just to inform them about the referendum vote itself. So, we've been, a lot going on, and it's good to obviously engage with people again in person to talk about the referendum as it pertains to our students.
Dr. Ogden, what kind of feedback did you get when you talked to the band parents and the drama parents?
It's good, you know. We're still trying to, and one of the things we're trying to, we still get people who, and rightfully sort of letting us know, you know, that they didn't know about it, right? And those kinds of comments that they, people even came to the board meeting right after the April vote and said they didn't know about it. So, I think they realize that we're trying to use every opportunity we can to just make sure, look, we'd rather you at least hear the information three times than say you didn't hear it at all and all that kind of stuff. But it's very, they've been very interested for those that are hearing it for the first time. And for those people that, you know, had, had known about it, I think, you know, there's a little bit of change this time around in regards to the fees, right? So, that's a new piece of information, and so there's a little bit there. We're trying to make sure everybody's aware. It's been good feedback, though, and I think people appreciate us, you know, trying to get out and communicate as much as we can. So, and if there's other formal, the one thing I wanted to make sure board members are aware of, even with like the Fill the Drum or other, other opportunities for us to present information, it was nice to have a board member or two at those events, just from a neighborly perspective and, you know, a community perspective. So, please, if you think you can make any of those, just if it's even just to say hello, that's great. We'll try to let you know as we get more dates moving forward, those things that come up. And please don't, you know, let us know if you think there's opportunities that we're missing, just to make sure we can bring our, our little presentation, if you will, on the road to other groups, too, just to let them know more about it.
I'll tell you guys that Fill the Drum is a really fun event. Really fun. So, if we could make it, that'd be great.
What day of the week is that?
That is on Wednesday evening.
Oh, yeah, I can make that.
So, that'd be great. Yeah, it's a great event. I mean, you know, we're excited to, and it is, you know, obviously, our, you know, there's a big impact for our, our band students and our future band students, right? There's a lot, a lot of implications for the referendum in regards to where we go with our band program. So, certainly, it's good to see that they're engaged in the discussion.
Well, it's really great that we have both middle schools that feed. So, at that event, you have 50 and 56. So, it's a perfect time to present information, the referendum, because we have the both feeder schools coming in, and then this way they know.
Right. And still, and our goal is also just to make sure that, you know, we also know that as long as it's at the right time and for, you know, because that event is, we really want to highlight kids, but certainly, we want to make sure that we take advantage of that opportunity. So, our next item on our old business, Dr. Engel, you stepped to the podium. We just wanted to make sure that we're talking a little bit more about, if you remember the last time we had a conversation about the Stern School Road property, I think the board, some newer board members got a little bit of history on, you know, why the Stern School Road property was purchased when we were approaching our kind of capacity, or knowing we were going to reach our capacity within the last six or seven years, and then when we purchased land 10 or 11 years ago. So, it was nice for the board to realize that, that we were approaching the 2,800 mark, or the 4,800 mark in regards to our capacity, and which is why the property was purchased. And yet, at the same time, you know, people wondered, you know, the core question for the board became, does the district have a need for the property anymore, before even talking about sale or anything like that? It's true, still trying to answer that fundamental question of, well, does the district need the property, which it still may. And so, we just wanted to make sure we continued the conversation tonight, or at least helped give us some direction from the board. And so, Mike gathered, just as, as you guys had requested, we just gathered some preliminary information about a couple of demographers who sent some information. Mike, what'd you get?
No, definitely. We received back some proposals from three different demographers that we had solicited, and we kind of got back three different kind of ways of doing demographies, if you will. Some included, including both Woodland and 56 and Milburn into it. Some looked at approaches just slightly, a little bit different, but it all boils down to what type of scenarios that the Board of Education would like to really have run. So, there's three different proposals here. Each one kind of outlines a little bit different of a scenario. I would say, out of the three, the John D. Casarda Consulting Group was probably the one that we would, might be most interested in. It seems to be like the most holistic, and it also looks at not just one or two aspects, but multiple different aspects of, of our student enrollment and where we might be going in the future. And the fees are all associated with each one of them. And, I mean, from our perspective or my perspective, was probably the best value. So, if you guys have any questions or any discussion, this is a discussion point.
So, I don't have any questions, you know, about the demographer and all that. I think the last time I said I'd, you know, I'm not tactically in favor of selling it, I think, but the main reason is I think we might need it someday. I think that's the main reason that I don't want to sell it. But I think the other reason that we're, you know, if we're selling this because of the referendum and the comments we get, we'll sell the, sell the property and that, you know, that'll, that'll solve your problems. But it, that's just simply not true. And I don't think we can say that enough either, because even if you sell the property, it's one-time money. We need money for every year. So, yeah, that, you know, it pays off the deficit for one year, maybe two years, but then when those years are over, the deficit's still there, and we still have the same problem. then when those years are over, the deficit's still there, and we still have the same problem. We have to solve the problem. So selling the land does not solve the problem. I don't mind investigating it, you know, just discussing it, but, you know, it does not solve the problem.
I'm at the same point. I'm a, I'm a hard no. I think it's short-sighted. I think there's long-term needs that were identified years ago that made a lot of sense and could still make a lot of sense, and the one-time money doesn't solve our operating expenditures. It does for the moment, but it doesn't solve it long-term. So, and, you know, even engaging a demographer at this point in time, I'm not sure anyone could have predicted the real estate market the way it is. And, you know, I've, as someone who's looked at a few demographer reports through the years, it's not, I, I'm a little leery of any information they're going to give us and the reality that that actually means anything. Again, there's just too many variables at the moment, so. As I stated before, I mean, if, if we're in a dire, dire situation, we need to start selling off assets, then, I mean, I'd never want to close the door, but at this point, it just simply won't solve the problem. So I think a lot of the postings and comments that you see online, they're ill-informed. So at this point, I'm not even in favor of doing a demographer.
I was wondering the same thing, like if, if the consensus, I would be against selling it as well for the same reason. So I just wondered, do we even need to go the demographer route? So that's, I wonder what our thoughts are on that.
I think the demographer was there just to see if someone had any insight as to, and I'm not convinced anybody has any insight to what really is going on population-wise, real estate-wise, our area. I mean, it's just, I don't know. I'm not sure right now it'd gain us any tangible information, but I could be wrong. I am familiar with two out of the three of these guys, though. And Casarda does do a good job. But his pricing model is then he goes after the feeders and sells them on it as well and, because he's doing the work anyway, so it's gravy to him. But, but his reports are decent. Out of the three, that's who I would recommend.
So a couple meetings ago, you know, we started this conversation. I mean, it was all about learning more about the potential of selling the land. I don't think we had decided if we were going to sell the land for the reasons that have been brought up. If there's some questions now, if we even want to go to this step, I'd say, can we table this conversation for another meeting and just kind of think about it amongst ourselves what we want to do? Because if we're, our minds are kind of made up that, you know what? I mean, I think we all know it's a short-term solution, so why go through this? Why spend the time and money on these guys? I mean, does that make sense? I mean, if we're pretty well set that we don't think selling the land is the right thing to do? So my suggestion is, in the conversation, the demographers, we'll keep this information, but at a future meeting, let's bring it up again so we can think about it and we still feel the same way. Let's just make sure that's an active item and we don't write it off completely in case there are still some questions on what we should do with the land. But at this point, I don't think it makes any sense to spend any more money to talk about selling the land.
Thank you.
Okay.
We are, have one more item, I think, on our agenda, and that's a quick little update. Dr. Keely, we've got a couple things on return to school, just a few little kind of updates in regards to vaccinations or testing and...
As you're probably aware, Governor Pritzker put a mandate for school staff either be vaccinated or be tested weekly. Initially, that deadline had just passed, but he extended it for two weeks. So that testing window for staff that is impacted actually starts tomorrow, between tomorrow and next Wednesday. We'll be collecting the test results each and every Wednesday of the staff that are not vaccinated. I'm very proud of the staff here at Warren Township High School. We're at approximately 94%. I say approximately, I know exactly, but it changes as someone turns in their card. So I don't want to say a definite number, but we have an extremely high rate that I'm extremely proud of, that our staff has made that decision to keep our students and our schools safe. But for the student, for the people that have not, again, weekly, the nurses and I will be collecting those test results and checking that off with those staff. Dashboard? The dashboard, we're looking at, because I think you're aware of, or maybe, they get the emails, right? Board members, you get the emails when you have a COVID positive case. So to put more context to that, we're looking at developing a dashboard that would be on our website so that someone can see the totality of what happened the week before with exact numbers of cases. Because sometimes that can be daunting, some parents, the feedback we've got, like, where's it at? How many is it? Were they vaccinated? Were they not vaccinated? We're not going to share that information because we can't, but maybe it'll put things in more perspective, although it is alarming when you see one, one or two positive cases. You realize that's one or two positive cases out of a possibility of about 4,800 people, because that would include our staff. So when you start doing that math problem, you realize it is a very, very small percentage. So I'm working along with Mr. Geo Karas to develop a dashboard that might be easier for our parents to digest that information and then arrive at decisions or how they feel based on that as well.
I'll put the last one on there, just some of the things that Dr. Keely and Mr. Geo Karas talked about earlier tonight in regards to our return to school and our ESTER plan. We've included some of those in our return to school plan, which is online, so we just wanted to make sure there was some connection there between our return to school plan and trying to safely have kids return and the funds that Chris talked through. So just to let you know, we have made some updates on, on that, so.
Any questions?
We, sorry, I can't remember. Did we ever engage in shield or not?
We were in conversations with them. Some schools have pulled away from shield. We certainly haven't pulled away from them and we're still in conversation. Also in the conversation with O'Hare Labs, that seems to give some more flexible options that might be more advantageous to our community members or family members, where they potentially could come and test at any time. We'd have the tests here on site. So I'm actively engaging in a conversation with them along, in partnership with our nurses, obviously. So I would say we're more closely looking at an O'Hare Lab proposal rather than shield.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah, I probably should have framed that as onsite testing. Didn't have to be shield. And then the second part is just comments. The 94% give or take is fantastic. So I know there are reasons why not everybody gets vaccinated, and some could be health-related or...
Sure.
Whatever reason, but the fact that 94% of our staff are vaccinated in front of our kids, as a parent, that makes me feel real good, and I, whether they did it for themselves or for the safety of our kids that are here at Warren, I appreciate that effort. So it, the 94% is to be commended.
That's a high number, isn't it? I mean, comparatively speaking, to other...
It is. You know, schools, schools do have high turnout, but I'm very proud of where our number is, and it'll grow, too. I do believe that it will grow, so.
Cool.
Next up is our second reception of visitors. If anybody would like to address the board, now is your opportunity. Nobody's running up here. They're all shaking their heads no, so that's fine. That being said, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
By Beals. Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Beals. Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Beals?[1789.21]